Well, good evening, everyone. Phil Panarski here with CBS 42 Now. Hope you're all having a great day. We are very excited for this debate we have for you tonight. It is the first of CBS 42's digital debates featuring all of the runoff elections in the city of Birmingham. Elections that we saw last month, again, the runoff election will be coming up next month on October 5th. Our very first digital debate will be for the Birmingham City School Board District One seat between incumbent Dr. Doug Ragland and the challenger Sherman Collins Jr. Our very own Lee Hedgepath will be moderating the debate, and we will send you there to Lee right now.
Hello, everybody. Welcome again. I'm Lee Hedgepath with CBS 42. I'm a digital reporter here, and I'll be moderating the debate tonight. So first, want to thank Dr. Ragland and Sherman Collins for joining us today for this debate. We appreciate you guys being here for this first digital debate. And again, we'll be having these debates for all of the runoff elections. So we'll be doing these on Tuesdays for the rest of the month, so be sure to tune in for those. So we want to begin by having each candidate do opening statements. So if we could, we'll begin with the incumbent, Dr. Ragland. If you just want to take a few minutes to introduce yourself with an opening statement.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you, Phil, for, and CBS 42 for hosting this debate. I'm Dr. Doug Ragland, and I am the District One School Board Representative, and I want to first and foremost thank all of my supporters and everyone at District One who showed confidence in putting me in office. And certainly, your support and your confidence in me is not taken for granted. I am a retired school superintendent. I'm an educator. I have spent over 34 years in education as a teacher, assistant principal, principal, central office administrator, from hearing officer to personnel coordinator, and I've served in superintendent roles in two different school districts in the state of Alabama, Green County and Midfield City. And I retired from those roles, at least that role in Midfield, in 2010. Like to say first and foremost, as your representative, I have worked collaboratively with the superintendent and my colleagues in achieving the following: successful leadership during an unprecedented global pandemic, achieved the highest-ever reserves 10 months in the school district history, achieved the first-ever district accreditation, full accreditation plan for the school district. And we have multiple, multiple excellent capital improvements, as well as a strategic plan focusing on student success, team excellence, stakeholder trust, and effective systems planning. And I want you to know that, in addition to all of that, we approved tax referendums exceeding $30 million per year for average law and tax referendums, and over $960 million over a 30-year period. And of course, we have obviously rejuvenated the system by having evaluation plans approved for employees to hold them accountable. And so I am proud of the record that we have. I'm a school system dedicated, at least not employee, but board member. I have been an employee in Birmingham for 18 years. I went to school in Birmingham for 12 years, graduated from Enslin High School, and my beloved wife also was a principal in Birmingham City. So I've been very vested in Birmingham City Schools, and I'm proud to represent you. I ask for you to reelect me for another four years so that we can continue this growth, this success, and have our children get global preparation for global success. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Ragland. I appreciate that. And Mr. Collins, if you want to give your opening statement now?
Well, I want to say good evening and welcome to all the listening audience. It is a pleasure to be here. I thank CBS 42 and you, the host, for putting on this debate. So let me introduce myself. I am Sherman Collins Jr. I'm a lifelong resident of Birmingham, a father of students that are currently attending Birmingham City Schools, and students that have gone through the system and graduated and on to better things. I am very familiar with the Birmingham school system since I was once your 2013-2017 District One Board Representative. I currently operate, own and operate a business, a childcare center, that we promote education and learning, and we ready our students for entering into the Birmingham school system. I would like to take this opportunity to remind all of the voters, at the time that I had taken that you elected me to be your school board representative, our school system was facing enormous amount of challenges. We were under state takeover, we had less than one month's reserve fund balance, as well as we were on the verge of losing our accreditation. You sent me to do a job then. I did that job along with my colleagues, and I'm looking for an opportunity to go back now to protect the work that we have put in place. So October 5th, I'm asking the voters of District One to reelect me, Sherman Collins Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. So we'll move on to debate questions now. So we'll have debates that both of you will answer, and then we'll give you an opportunity to rebut anything. So at any time during the debate, if you have something to say, feel free to go ahead and say it after the other person has spoken. So the first question that we have tonight is on something that's on everybody's minds, which is COVID-19. So, you know, as the school year has progressed already, I think we're about a month into the school year, we've seen a large number of cases in Birmingham City Schools. The number of COVID cases, positive cases among students and staff has increased over the first three weeks at least of the school year. And we have also seen a large number of students excluded from school due to quarantining because of the virus and exposure to the virus. So we already have a mask mandate in Birmingham City Schools, but the question is about vaccines. So what I'd like to ask both of you, and we'll begin with Mr. Collins and then move to Dr. Ragland. The question is, what steps can Birmingham City Schools take to better protect students and their, you know, potentially immunocompromised parents or grandparents that they live with from COVID-19? What further steps can the system take? And then, as well, as the FDA is approving, fully authorizing the vaccines for COVID-19, do you think that vaccines should become mandated for those 12 and older in Birmingham City Schools? So we'll begin with you, Mr. Collins.
Well, thank you for the question. Hope I can get it answered all. Well, first off, I, the Birmingham school system, having a child currently in that school, in the school system, I share the concerns of every single parent and the fear of every single parent that attends Birmingham City Schools, as well as any school district. It is a horrible disease, and it's a difficult time. I personally think that the Birmingham school system have done a number of things, I've seen, to protect our students and to encourage the vaccine. I think the last week, they were doing COVID shots for those that are 17 and above, and I think that's a great partnership with the local health organizations to encourage the vaccine. I think every family should consider it. It's, I think it is a family decision for the shot. I certainly would lean more towards you taking it than not, but I think eventually, just like any other vaccine that we take in our, in order to be, to be able to attend our school system, I think is, more than likely, will become mandatory.
Okay. Dr. Ragland, do you have an answer for that question? What can the school system do to better protect parents and students? And then also, do you think that vaccines should eventually be required for those 12 and up for whom the vaccine is approved?
Yes, sir. I do have an answer for that. And I will say, the school district is, we were one of the first school districts to come out and actually mandate masks, whether you've been vaccinated or not. And of course, we believe in going by the CDC guidelines, and so that's what we've done from day one. Other districts did not do that, and of course, ultimately, they decided to do what we originally started. We believe in a COVID-19 plan, that we have education plan, and making sure that our parents are educated. We have a social media platform to make sure they're educated on that. We believe in the masking, as I mentioned. We believe in the PPEs for our students and our children. We believe in making sure that the buildings are clean, and we have been working diligently to do that, and filtrations and so forth. And we have just done a number of things to encourage parents to be vaccinated and so forth. You mentioned the number of cases. In Birmingham, the latest count that I had was 225 cases. We have over 20,000 students. That's right at less than 1% of our students are cases in Birmingham City. And most of those are at the middle school and high school levels, and many of those are for people that have not been vaccinated, in terms of our children and parents and so forth. And I want you to understand that in Birmingham City, we're partnering with UAB, we're partnering with other areas, the ministerial alliances, the Jefferson County Health Department, and we're partnering with UAB in terms of the public health to make sure we have the vaccines, COVID-19 shots, and we're partnering with the minority health department to make sure we have the vaccines going on in our schools. And so we're vaccinating students, and everybody's welcome weekly at all of our middle and high schools. And so we're doing our part, and I was one of a few board members to get on and do public service announcements, stressing the importance of getting vaccinated and so forth. Yes, I think they should be mandated vaccinations. Yes, I think since Pfizer has come out with the FDA approval, it's encouraged more people to do so because there was a fear out there. But now, people are really, really, I think, moving forward to understanding the seriousness of this matter and trying to get vaccinated because we need to make sure that when our children, 12 and under, are not covered with the vaccine, they'll also wear masks. And when they go home, they need to be around folks who are vaccinated, as opposed to those who are not, because they are vulnerable to getting this, COVID-19. And so I just want you to know that we're doing our part in all those aspects to make sure that we protect our children, protect our teachers, and like I said before, we have 225 cases, and of those cases, I think we have 31 teachers. And so that's 1% of our population. So I think we're working hard. We don't want any cases, but that's what we have as we stand right now.
Thank you, Dr. Ragland. And again, if any, if, Mr. Collins, if you want to add anything, and you're welcome to, just interrupt me at the end of every question. One more question on COVID-19. So one thing that a lot of folks are talking about is, will school districts be moving to a virtual setting as we see increases from the Delta variant? So I want to ask you both, do you support moving into a virtual setting if the current trends in COVID-19 continue, as we've seen them already? And we'll start with you, Dr. Ragland.
Thank you, Lee. Certainly, I approve or support going to a virtual setting if things get worse, because the key is the safety of our children. At this point in time, we're looking at a virtual pilot program for our district in terms of planning for virtual school for next year at any rate. So we're looking at the virtual aspect as we speak. Right now, we prefer in-person learning since it's the best results in terms of being effective and having that one-to-one correspondence with teachers and students and so forth. But certainly, safety is the key, and if the numbers are to the point where we need to go to a virtual or remote setting, we'll do that. We've done that from the beginning. We started out virtual last year. We went to hybrid, which is two days a week for certain groups, A and B, and then we went on to in-person. So when we got to the point where we did the in-person, and we realized the cases were increasing at that time last school year, we reverted back to virtual. So I think our superintendent, in monitoring the numbers, talking to the Jefferson County Health Department officer, will make the best decision for the school system, and we'll support what's best for our children in terms of safety.
Thank you. Mr. Collins, do you have a response on virtual learning?
Could you, what was the original question that I want to make sure I have?
Yeah. So if the current trends of COVID-19 continue, we see a larger and larger number of cases because of the Delta variant, would you support moving to a virtual setting for schools in Birmingham?
Absolutely, I would. As I stated, I am a Birmingham City School parent. I understand the school system's approach to this awful pandemic and how it's affecting learning and teaching and learning in our classrooms. My son experienced some lag as well from virtual. It was, from a parent's standpoint, it poses challenges. I like to say that, I know we, Dr. Ragland just mentioned a pilot program, but during my administration, we had all, we had already, we had established a pilot program, laying a, we had tinkered with virtual learning. So I'm glad to know that that playbook was left behind, that they could build off of, and Dr. Sullivan was a part of that. I guess that pilot and understanding and implementing it. So I'm glad to see that those aspects that we laid behind are still being used, and certainly, our support going back to virtual.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. So we'll move on to the next topic, which is charter schools. So charter schools have been a hotly debated issue. I think you are both aware that there have been a lot of critics of the expanding number of charters in and around the Birmingham area. So far, it seems like the Birmingham School Board has resisted charter schools, but the question that I have for you both is, do you support expanding the number of charter schools in Birmingham? And we'll begin with you, Mr. Collins.
Well, during my administration was when the state legislature approved the charter school law. The major problem, the issue that I have with charter school expansion is, is that it competes for the same funding source as Birmingham City Schools do. And if you look at the law, it is, it needs some work done. There's a lot of ambiguity in the law. It doesn't, it gives charter schools an unfair advantage in areas. For an example, when I was a member of the Birmingham Board of Education, we had to offer any unused buildings to charter schools before we could sell them off. It also allows charter to choose their students. Birmingham City School has to educate what it has, what's in our community. I think also Birmingham City Schools has to put in its budget, what's required to put in its budget, at least $200,000 for charter schools. I think that presents an unfair advantage for a 20-year experiment, and I am for a public, true public education. I do not support the expansion of charter schools. I think Birmingham City School has an excellent system. Do, are there improvements that need to be made? Absolutely, just like any other school system. And those will be the things that I will be working with the superintendent and the next board on ensuring that Birmingham City Schools is the choice of everyone. I know how important schools are to our community, the growth of it, property values. So I want to do, I want to do what is best for our students, and where we are deficient at, I say, let us work on those. Let us fix those things.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Dr. Ragland, same question to you. Do you support, support the expansion of charter schools in the Birmingham area?
Lee, let me first of all start by saying this. You alluded to, you mentioned that Birmingham City Schools has resisted charter schools and so forth in terms of the applications and none being approved by the district. Just want you to understand, I want everybody to understand that every charter school application that's come before us has been incomplete in terms of the criteria that's required to be successful. And I understand they've gone on to the state level, the charter commission and so forth to get approved, but obviously, they had to modify and enhance that application process. So let me just make that clear. Secondly, let me just say, I'm a Birmingham City School advocate. As I mentioned before, I grew up in the district, attended all schools in the district, at least all my elementary and middle and high school years, Birmingham City Schools at that time was really K-8 in high school years for me. And of course, I want Birmingham City Schools to be the absolute best, world-class school system. So I'm taking a different spin on this. I don't want to give parents the opportunity to see anything but excellence in our school system and say, this is where we want our children to go. This is where we need to be. And so I would love for all of our parents to stay with us, but I would love for us to make sure we're doing our part in terms of enhancing curriculum, meeting the whole child needs, and making sure that we are attractive in recruiting outstanding students and parents, and educating them to the levels of excellence that they deserve. So charter schools definitely will take away from Birmingham City Schools, and so I don't, I don't advocate any organization taking away from our district, but at the same time, I want you to understand that parents make a choice. They make a choice with charter schools, they make a choice with private schools, they make a choice with Birmingham City Schools, they make a choice within our school system. If they don't like one particular school, I feel like it's not meeting their needs, they will go to another school. So I want to make sure it's clear, absolutely clear, that I'm an advocate for Birmingham City Schools, and I want to make sure we keep all the students, all the funding and everything in Birmingham City. However, I cannot argue with anyone who feels like if we're not meeting their needs, or who feels that their children need to have another aspect of needs met from a social, emotional, academic, or whatever aspect, that I have to respect that decision. But do I advocate for charter schools? I'm advocating for Birmingham City Schools, Lee. That's my answer on that question.
Thank you, Dr. Ragland. Mr. Collins, did you have anything to add there?
I too want to add that all, during my administration, we actually chose not to become a conversion charter school, but more of an authorized, those were the options given to us by the law. And we chose that because we wanted to, if we had to deal with charter schools, we wanted to make sure that they were in order. So as stated, the applications that we received as well were incomplete, or the applicant had something that was, from funding, from their funding source, to programming that didn't go along with us proving them as their, approving their charter. But as you can see, the law, how it is written, allows those charter schools to simply go around us, go to the state of Alabama and get their charter schools. I think, I only think, it's only been one charter school that I can remember that actually did not get approved by the state when they went around Birmingham to get that. So I think if we're going to be actually a part of this process, I think the law should be geared more towards making sure that we have control, more control of the situation than we do, and not this, how can I say, this delay in approving them or not approving them, so.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. So we'll move on to a little bit of a less intense issue. We want voters to be able to get to know both of you a little bit better. So this question kind of goes to that. So I want to ask both of you, what was your first job that you ever had, and what did you learn from that job? And we'll start with you, Mr. Collins.
The first job I ever had was cutting grass. I started as a little boy in Norwood, riding, going around to neighborhood, I mean neighbors, cutting their grass. At the time, it was, it was $6 a yard, so that's been a while now. But the thing that I learned from that is the, I learned self-worth, independence, earning my own money, being responsible, and doing a good job. My dad used to always say, no matter what type of job you do, you do your best at it. And that's what I've always taken with me. I am a businessman now, and I strive right now to be the best at what I do. And those are the things that I learned, that have molded me, and I pray that I'm passing those values off to not only my children, but the young boys that I have been mentoring, coaching for 10-plus years at one of our local schools. Shout out to Sun Valley Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Dr. Ragland, what was your first job, and what did you learn from that job?
Lee, I'm going to just start from a professional standpoint. My first job as a teacher, I taught advanced language arts, and actually, I taught Mr. Collins, and you know, he's one of my former students. So basically, I'll just throw that out there. And certainly, what I've learned is, as a teacher in 1978, my first job, a teacher has the single most important influence in a child's life in that school setting. Now, obviously, the parents in coming to the school prior to that would be more important, but the teacher is key in that. And I was very blessed to teach children in terms of advanced language arts and reading, and most importantly, I was very blessed to coach children in extracurricular activities such as spelling bees and debate forensics, oratorical contests, and the like. And what I learned from that is that you have to really, really instill confidence in young people, have high expectations, and they can accomplish anything. We had several award-winning debate teams that I had at Huffington Middle School when I taught there, and then went back to Center Street when it was middle school, and beat my old school champions at Huffington Middle School and turned me to Huffington High School. So that showed those kids that had never debated before, that you could accomplish anything, but you just have to work hard, and you have to believe in yourself, and most importantly, you know, just know that good things come to people who work hard. So I'm very proud of all of those accomplishments that I had as a teacher in molding those individuals at the K-8 level, as well as the middle school level, and making sure that we take it a step beyond in collaborating with various organizations, giving them experiences of growth. And many of these folks that I taught, the students that I taught, and that were under me have become successful lawyers and successful professionals, and many of them come back and tell me all the time, Dr. Ragland, you did this, you said this, or I wouldn't be here if it were not for you. Of course, I give God the credit and glory for their success, but they want to let me know that there was something that I said or did at that time that influenced them, and it means a lot to me to know that I had that impact on their lives. And certainly, I just attribute their success to God, first and foremost, their parents, as well as me, myself playing a minor role in that, in that success. So that's what I learned, and that's what I really benefited from, and I'm just thankful that I had the opportunity to teach, and I went on from there to do other things as well. But I'm just focusing on that first job, teaching. And if you were to ask me today, what was the most important job that I've ever had from superintendent, principal, assistant principal, and all those other administrative positions, I will tell you the classroom teacher was the most important one and the most fulfilling.
Thank you, Dr. Ragland. You know, that begs for a follow-up, and I have to ask both of you. First, Mr. Collins, how was Dr. Ragland as a teacher?
Um, that was back in sixth and seventh grade, I believe. I think he might have been eighth-grade teacher, if I'm not mistaken, long time ago. I remember him a lot differently than he is today, but yet, still somewhat the same. So can I just leave it at that?
Sure you can. Dr. Ragland, do you have anything to say about Mr. Collins as a student?
Well, he's right. It's been a long time.
Many personal violations, but...
He's right. It's been a long time ago, and of course, you know, I've had many, many students that come my way and so forth, and Sherman, or Mr. Collins, was certainly one that was very disciplined in the classroom and didn't cause many problems. Let me just say it like that. So I enjoy having to mess with it.
All right. So I want to ask you guys a bit more serious question. So you know, you both know, critical race theory has been something that's been, you know, a hot-button issue, particularly politically, not necessarily educationally in the state. But we saw the State Board of Education ban the teaching of critical race theory in K-12 schools. We also know CBS has reported, Dr. Mackey has emphasized this, that critical race theory was never taught in K-12 schools. So we know that as well. But the question that I have for you guys is this. So despite critical race theory, putting it to the side, culturally relevant teachings are definitely important for our students. And Alabama, as a state, has a history of kind of whitewashing history, right? Diluting history, maybe ignoring some issues, not emphasizing things like civil rights history, maybe as much as the state should. So my question is, in the Birmingham City School District, do you think the district has done a good job when it comes to culturally relevant teachings, things like Black History? And if not, what do you think the school district can do better when it comes to that? Dr. Ragland, we'll begin with you.
Well, I think we can always improve in that area, and as you mentioned, Lee, the Black History Month that we have every, every year, where we focus on the accomplishments and outstanding accomplishments of our Black leaders, past and present, and so forth, that's, that's, that's great and so forth. I've always said, we need to have that taught on a daily basis, as opposed to just a yearly basis, and emphasizing one month and so forth. I think that all comes down to an equity policy, and we are working on trying to get... a yearly basis and emphasizing one month and so forth. Uh, I think that all comes down to an equity policy and we are working on trying to get something to the fact that we have equity in our school district so that we can, uh, afford opportunities for our students to learn more about, uh, their history. And I think we need to have current events. I think we need to have teachings in the classrooms where, uh, we're not afraid to talk about things such as uh, race and things of that nature. Uh, it's, it's, it's something that we need to highlight and I think we can do a better job doing that. It's up to each individual teacher, every individual school to, uh, see how they would like to, uh, incorporate that in their curriculum and so, so to speak. But I know I, I certainly as a teacher and principal and superintendent, uh, gave my folks the freedom to do what they need to do to educate our students on all cultures and not just black and white. And just making sure that we acknowledge the excellence of everyone because all folks are excellent in some form or fashion and we need to recognize that more. And we need to have equity in terms of, uh, not only the students learning more about things of that nation, but providing our teachers and, and administrators with the equity they need in terms of hiring the best folks, hiring the most qualified folks and making sure that we have a representation of the students in the classrooms, in the schools. And letting people see that, um, you sitting there as, uh, whether you're a minority student or whether you're majority, whatever, but you can be successful and we have someone showing a true example of that success in the classroom or in the community. And we need to make sure that we emphasize these kinds of things in our school settings. And so I'm, I'm an advocate of making sure that we do better. So I think we can improve in that area.
Thank you, Dr. Ragland. Mr. Collins, how do you think Birmingham City Schools can strengthen, um, you know, teachings about issues like civil rights or black history more generally?
Well, I'll say this, if Birmingham City School is predominantly African-American. And I think one of our issues in our school system is, is that we, our students, um, a community, uh, we are searching for our identity, our place in this society. And part of understanding who we are, um, is learning. And for most families, that learning is, uh, introduced, uh, first started by the school system. And most times it takes, um, it's, it's our responsibility or at least, uh, our community and our parents believe is, um, if not totally, a large part of our responsibilities to educate. So I think that we certainly need to do more. And as a board member, I would certainly work with and encourage our superintendent, um, as rest of, uh, as well as the rest of the board to, uh, search out ideas and opportunities for our students to, um, get our true identity, how we got here, how, why, how our situation is what it is. Um, and I think we can do that in a way that does not alienate our, uh, fellow citizens, um, and, and encourage them, our other citizens of Birmingham, um, our other students in our Birmingham s- s- school system to embrace that so that we all, um, can learn about each other and understand each other better and, uh, and move forward to, to making our school system a better school system, our state a better state, our city, our country a better system. Because right now we have a divide in our, in our country. And, and I, and I don't think, I think if we do this right, we can bridge that gap. Um, and I think that, that gap is best bridged or certainly, uh, encouraged by, uh, what is taught in our school system and the education of our students. So certainly I would encourage us to do more. Um, and more in terms of having more activities, more speakers, uh, not being afraid of this issue, but embracing it. And, uh, for everyone and doing it in a way that, 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 that everybody can learn from.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. So I have one more question to let folks get to know you both a little bit better. And that question is this. In your professional life so far, is there a regret that you have that you wish you could go back and change? Is there a regret you've had in your professional life so far? And if you have that regret, you know, what have you learned from, from that experience? Mr. Collins, we'll start, we'll start with you.
Wow. I really don't live in regrets. Um, I believe that what happens in your life happens. Um, God directs that and, uh, we just kind of play it out. So I can't say that I have any professional regrets because I, I'm very proud of what I've, uh, accomplished in my life. God has blessed me to accomplish in my life. Um, so I, I, I always want to, to do more um, than what I've already done. Um, because my goal is to make sure that, uh, before I leave this earth, that I have impacted, um, somebody's life positively, as many people as I possibly can positively so that, um, they can, uh, have a better life, so they can pass on values. Uh, so, so I, I wouldn't say I have any regrets because I, I even teach my, my children and like I said, the, the, the young men that I mentor, never have a regrets. Leave it all out there. Uh, all you can do is do your very best that you can do and let God do the rest. So no, I, I, I can't say I have any professional regrets.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Dr. Ragland, any regrets you want to tell us about?
Uh, thank you so much for the question. Um, I'm a spiritual leader and I certainly believe in, uh, God or in my footsteps. And, um, uh, certainly I've made mistakes. We all have made mistakes and so forth. And the key is to learn from those mistakes, but I never go back and, and, um, and just harbor on something that I've done or just, um, wish I could have done it differently in terms of, uh, whatever God's plan is for my life. So I just feel like when things work out, whether it's a disappointment or whether it's a situation where, uh, I may have wanted to go this direction, but, but it didn't work out the way I found out later that the Lord had me going this direction instead. And that was a better direction than what I had planned. So God's plan is better than my plan. So I don't have any regrets. I'm so thankful and blessed to be where I am. Uh, if anything, I can just, uh, just give him the praise, honor and glory for everything that, uh, I've been through in terms of, um, the, the people I've met, uh, first and foremost, having God first in my life. Secondly, uh, my beautiful wife who's, uh, been with me and stuck by me through, uh, all of the trials and tribulations I've gone through. And, and most importantly, um, the people of, um, District One who have supported me and put me in a role where I can be a servant leader. And I've been a servant leader in so many districts throughout the state. Uh, from, uh, Birmingham to Green County to Yoffala to Midfield and just touched many lives. So I don't think I have any regrets. I know I don't have any regrets. I'm just glad that I was able to be there to, uh, to formulate, um, uh, success and assistance succeeding uh, with children and with parents and with stakeholders and collaboratively speaking, and just making sure that I'm an upstanding moral citizen. And I can honestly say throughout my life and throughout my career, I have no flaws in terms of, uh, things that I've done to embarrass my family and things I've done to embarrass myself. I've, I've been really, uh, diligent in making sure that I do it the right way, but most importantly, I do it God's way. So, uh, no regrets, but only blessings and, and thanks to him for where I am. And I do well say this, Lee, um, the best is yet to come. So he's not finished with me. And so I know that and I'm just waiting on, uh, the next chapter, uh, that he has for me. And I just give him glory and honor and praise.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ragland. So before we move to closing statements, I promised you both that I would let you ask each other one question. So we'll do that now. Um, Dr. Ragland, we'll let you go first. Do you have a question for Mr. Collins?
I do have a question for Mr. Collins and, um, Lee, I, I want to just stress this question like this. Uh, Mr. Collins had in his opening statement where he talked about, uh, how the people in Birmingham sent him to do a job in, at the school district. And he mentioned, um, the district being under state takeover and, um, accreditation and things of that nature. Um, he's alluded to the fact that, um, the district was, um, released from state takeover as a result of the efforts of that school board. And, uh, I just want people to understand that the district was released, um, as a result of the work that the district team from the State Department of Education led by, uh, at that time, uh, Dr. Ed Richardson and appointed by Tom DeBeist to get the district out of, um, state takeover. Uh, he's made comments that, uh, everything that has, um, been accomplished by the school board was as a result of what was done in his tenure. And, you know, certainly with the Jefferson County Commission, with the Alabama State Department of Education, with the, uh, Educational Trust Fund and with, uh, so many other variables we have. But we have monies and finances that have come in under our leadership at lower taxes and things of that nature. Didn't result with that school board. And certainly that school board had nothing to do with that. He's alluded to the fact that accreditation occurred. Uh, at least he actually said in one public meeting that the accreditation was, uh, released, uh, when he was there and the district was. And, and that's not true. It happened in 2018 when I was super, when I was a, a board member and when we were on the board. So I guess my question is, I want to make sure people understand that, uh, things that are being said, uh, are being misrepresented when it says that the district had something to do with state takeover, being released. They were released as a result of being in office. They weren't released as a result of the work. Uh, as far as everything being accomplished in terms of what we've accomplished financially with our fund balance being at 10 months. It was as a result of those entities with the commission, uh, the modified or the, uh, uh, the bond debt that was, uh, released by the state, um, Supreme Court to the point where, uh, we got the, the success from the 69 million in interest and so forth and 4.1 million every year. And of course, we had Avalon Taxes passed and they go up every year. And the Education Trust Fund has 7.7 billion, uh, most ever that has had funding in the education budget. So all of those increases had nothing to do with the Board of Education, uh, in 2013 to 17.
Dr. Ragland, is there a question there for him?
The question is, Mr. Collins, why are you misrepresenting the facts when that's not the case?
Mr. Collins?
So, so as I stated before, when I took office, our school system was under state takeover. State takeover. While I was in office, we were still under state takeover for the first year. We were released from state takeover almost a year, al- almost a year after I was, um, uh, uh, elected to the school board. So to say that someone is misrepresenting facts, we need to make sure that the, the statement that you're making is accurate. Secondly, when I took office, we didn't, we, we had less than one month's reserve fund balance. That's the reason why the state was there. Okay? We didn't build, we didn't have, uh, the fund balance that this, this administration has because we had to build it from almost nothing. So to say we didn't build that, that our, um, this fund balance, because I believe when I left office, we had two and a half months of reserve fund balance, which laid the foundation. We laid the, the accounting foundation. We laid the, any policies. Um, if you really go back and look at it, when the state took us over, they cut out a lot of jobs. They cut out a lot of programming. We had to go in and, and, and build those programming back up. We also, and I believe it was in 2015, no, 2016, uh, we went out and courageously asked the citizens of Birmingham to increase their property meal, their property tax so that we could put programming back in our school. So when, when Dr. Ragland says that he, he wants to, I guess, excuse the work that my board and his current colleagues, um, uh, worked hard to accomplish. I think that's a little bit disingenuous. And I, I, I would say that, um, just check the record. It's there. Um, if it were not there, then why, why is Birmingham City Schools being sued for 1.4 million by a charter school? It's not because he, that, that charter school is not getting the money from the state. That charter school wants that Avalorian tax that we approved, their portion of it. So, so no one is misrepresenting facts now. Um, so I don't know if that answers the question, but.
Well, Mr. Collins, I'll give you this opportunity if you would like to ask Dr. Ragland a question.
Exactly. Thank you. Uh, Dr. Ragland, uh, with a board which is almost controlled, with a board with new members, that's, that, uh, I think it's four new members who almost have total control of the school board and which all of them are pro-charter. How would you stop, um, those, our system from changing into what I believe their motive, their, their, their agenda is to change us into a conversion charter school district? So the question is, is what would you do to make sure that that did not happen as, or would you even do it?
Dr. Ragland?
Thank you, Mr. Collins, for the question. Um, certainly, um, being on a school board, you're a one vote, you're one member, obviously. And whatever decision that the majority of the school board make, you have to live with that decision if you're in the minority. That we can discuss and we can talk about different things and so forth and so on. But one representative is not going to stop or control, uh, one vote can't control a, a measure or a subject or an issue. So you have to learn how to work with people and convince people of what's the best thing to do. Just like you have to work with the superintendent when he brings, he or she brings irresponsible recommendations to the school board. You have to make sure that you work with them in terms of saying, this is not going to work and we want you to relook at this again. But again, if they bring a recommendation to the school board and the superintendent brings the recommendation, the school board approves it. We have no control over what recommendation is going to be brought there. As far as charter school goes, there's a team working at the central office. That recommendation goes to the superintendent. That superintendent brings it to us. We're not in that process. So basically, we either accept that recommendation or we say we vote no, we vote yes. So if, it's unfortunate that, uh, you're not going to get your way all the time. So when you don't get your way, you have to accept the responsibility of what the board, the majority wants, and you have to live with that. And that's what you do in terms of working collaboratively and accepting responsibility. And sometimes you don't always win.
Thank you, Dr. Ragland. Well, now we're tied on time. We're going to go ahead and move to closing statements. Um, so, Mr. Collins, do you want to give your closing, brief closing statement, if you will?
Okay. Well, once again, I want to thank, um, you all for having us and all the audience that are listening. I just want to remind you all that I don't need to listen in how to be a board member or how board, uh, the process goes. I was there first. I was there at a time when the board didn't know, um, how to operate properly. I mean, I, I came after a board that didn't know how to operate properly. We put in place, uh, 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 board ordinance. I mean, um, uh, and, and, and we, we laid the groundwork for that. So I'm asking our voters of District One, this election unfortunately is not about education. It's about who's going to control our school system moving forward. And I'm asking you to give me an opportunity to go serve in a capacity. Because I, I understand that I am just one vote, but I have a voice and that voice has changed other, uh, uh, that voice has caused us to, uh, other people to change in there. So I'm going to be speaking up, uh, for issues and letting you know. Okay. So October the 5th, I'm asking you all to give me another opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Dr. Ragland, your closing statement, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. And thank you so much for, to CBS 42 for hosting this debate as well. And thank you to Mr. Collins for coming on and, and debating with me as well. Uh, just want to say that, um, as, as you can see voters and members of the audience, there's a clear choice here between, um, your, your school board representative. You're looking at someone who's an educator. You're looking at someone who has a proven track record over 34 years in education. Looking at somebody who has a proven track record, uh, in a variety of capacities in education, teaching, uh, administration and so forth. You're looking at somebody who has a track record on the school board. That, um, obviously, uh, we have approved as a school board, um, leadership through the pandemic and providing one-on-one, uh, opportunities for our students with computers and hotspots for families and so forth. Uh, going through an unprecedented global pandemic. We have approved multimillion safety and security plans. We have the highest financial reserves ever. We have a district of full accreditation, which we've never had. And that, that means a lot to businesses as well as the colleges when students leave our school system to know that they are leaving an accredited school. We, we, our school system rather. We have, uh, 81% graduation rate. We have a 95%, oh, a 91% graduation rate at Huffman High School. Uh, we have, uh, major, major capital improvements at all schools in District One and all schools throughout the district. Uh, we certainly, uh, have passed many, many, many measures in, in the district along lines of, uh, making sure we have the high qualified, highly qualified and professionally certified teachers in our school district. I am a highly qualified and professionally certified teacher. I am a highly qualified and professionally certified teacher. I am one of two master-level school board members on the school board. So I practice what I preach when I talk about professional development. So I want you to know that we have an expectation for our children to have global success, excellence in every aspect and to know that they can compete against anybody, not just locally, not just statewide, not just nationally, but globally and come back and be productive citizens in our society. So I ask that you send me back to the board, reelect me on October 5th so that we can continue the momentum that we started. Birmingham didn't get into a situation as it is overnight and we're not going to get out overnight. Rome wasn't built in a day. So give me another opportunity so we can escalate this even more so than what we have. Because I can tell you right now, arguably, since elected boards were established in 2009 and appointed boards on, on, before that, this school board has produced milestones that neither one of those have. And I'm proud to say that I'm a part of that. So thank you so much and I hope everyone has a blessed evening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ragland. And thank you, Mr. Collins. Thank you both for joining us for this debate. Again, I'm Lee Hetchpeth. I'm a CBS 42 digital reporter. We encourage everybody that's watching this debate, continue to tune into our debates for the other municipal runoffs in the city. And we'll also have reporting on the issues that we've talked about tonight and on other issues. So I'm going to toss it back to Phil Panarski, our digital anchor here at CBS 42. And again, thank you all for joining us tonight.
All right. Thank you so much, Lee. Very informative debate we heard there for the Birmingham City School Board District One seat. Again, that is one of four runoffs from the Birmingham City elections just last month. We heard from the incumbent, Dr. Doug Ragland, as well as the challenger, Sherman Collins Jr. Both gave a lot of great information, great questions. I want to thank Lee for moderating that. He did a fantastic job. I do want to remind everybody that you can find a recap of this whole debate as well as previews for the other debates we will be having right here on CBS 42 Now by heading on over to our website, CBS42.com. You can also find, get notified about all of the latest news regarding your elections going on in the coming weeks. Again, the runoff election is October 5th. You do have until September 20th. If you are not already registered to vote, to do so in order to vote in the runoff elections. Again, CBS 42 is your local election headquarters. You can stay up to date by downloading the CBS 42 News app. It is available for free for all Android and iOS devices. Again, a recap of this debate will be available over on our website in just a matter of moments. So in case you missed any of that or you want to pass it along to some other voters who are in that District One proximity, be sure to do so. Again, that will be available in just a matter of moments. I want to thank Dr. Doug Ragland and Mr. Sherman Collins Jr. for coming on and having that debate with us here as the first of our many digital debates here on CBS 42 Now. I want to thank you all for tuning in. Once again, I'm Phil Panarski and we hope you have a great rest of your day.